Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm reconvening back to a regular meeting from our recess now. And we will move to added items to the agenda. We have one added item that has been circulated, and that would be Road Closure Bylaw 2016-01 Extension. That will be put under Bylaws 7B. Do we have any further added items? Seeing none, I'd ask, please then, for adoption of the agenda as amended. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, I move that council adopt the agenda as amended.
Thank you. With Item 7B, Road Closure Bylaw 2016-01. Any further questions? Seeing none, I would call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Previous minutes, please. February -- from February 8th. Motion, please. Anybody? Counsel over water.
Thank you, your worship. I move that the minutes from February 8th, 2016, regular council meeting be adopted as presented.
Thank you. Does council have questions? Seeing none, then, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Presentations and delegations? None? Business rising out of the minutes, please. I like that smile on Mr. Wagstaff's face. Do you have any business rising? Okay. All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Of Mr. Wagstaff's smile. Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Item 7, Bylaws. And we'll start with 7A, please. And this is Bylaw 2016-02. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, your worship. Carrie, are you going to lead us through this RFD?
Yes, sir, I will. Good evening. Are we on? Okay. Bylaw 2016-02 is a bylaw to amend our existing land use bylaws 01-23. And this is part of an ongoing set of revisions to the land use bylaw, an effort to clarify requirements of new developments and promote a clear interpretation of the land use bylaw. As this information was presented at the Policy and Priorities Meeting last week, I'll just kind of go over a high-level synopsis of what the proposed bylaw amendment is. First of all, we're proposing to add a few definitions that are currently not defined in the land use bylaw, but we use quite often in our permits and our conditions, et cetera, so we felt that they are necessary. The next section is just basically clarifying in the R3 land use district with regards to a percentage that's required for landscaping. We're actually adding, to clarify that, 30 percent of the parcel areas to be landscaped. And a small reduction on the landscape area designed for separate parking facilities from windows of the R3 developments, reducing the requirement from 20 feet to 13 feet. And we're also proposing some clarification in the general -- or in all of the residential districts, just to confirm that the front yard is the minimum amount of site to be landscaped. And in the Commercial 1 district, or Central Commercial District, we're just clarifying that landscaping requirements will be at the discretion of the Development Authority, depending on the development, because in our C1 area, we do have some residential developments currently, or residential uses currently in there that are zoned C1. And some clarification to the Highway Commercial and CHA district, just to present that a minimum of 15 percent of the parcel area be landscaped. And a similar requirement in the Light Industrial Districts, 10 percent being the minimum requirement. And then moving on to number H, just adding some clarification that if it's not stated in one of the districts, if it's a new district developed or something, and it's not stated that a minimum of 10 percent of the site area shall be landscaped. Just a little clarification on the landscaping of boulevards, that they shall be ceded and landscaped as per the town's standards. And the number J is just regarding storing of vehicles, that they are not to be parked or stored on landscaped areas, which includes lawn. And the next two are regarding, just some clarification with regards to landscaping and parking lots that hold more than 25 vehicles, just that we're requiring some more definitive landscaping there. And the next two are regarding landscape plans. Just a little more clarification that an architectural -- a professional landscape design needs to be submitted with a development permit with regards to any development permits of non-residential districts. And number O and P are just some clarification regarding landscape tree and shrub requirement. We're proposing, actually, in the new amendment, that a minimum of one tree per lot be required in all residential and duplex developments. And then, further to that, that any other land use district, it's based on a square footage formula, as so many trees per that square footage and so many shrubs per that square footage. And then the last proposed amendment is just regarding to curbing or approved barriers with regards to the landscaped areas and traffic areas and streets and that kind of thing. And that concludes the proposed amendments.
Thank you. I know we did look at this as well at our council P&amp;P. We had councillors that were away, so thank you for reviewing the entirety of that once again. Council, do you have questions? Counselor Harper?
I'm sure this question was asked at the P&amp;P meeting, but in reference to landscaped plans for all non-residential areas, does this mean somebody who is wanting to develop a lot in the Central Commercial District would have to hire a landscape architect in order to submit a plan? According to this, it would be?
Thank you. Through to the chair. Actually, the C, because of the number E, which says it's at the discretion of the Development Authority, depending on the type of development and like how much land is there, like there's a lot of C1, that there is no front yards, or there's no landscape requirements at all, but there is some residential-type units that are being used as commercial that we may need it. So it sort of leaves it open at the discretion of the Development Authority to decide if you need one or not. And most chances, I'm thinking, we wouldn't need one. I see what you're saying, though, about non-residential districts.
So just, you know, I don't have any issues going forward by putting first reading on the table tonight, but I would just like further clarification in reference to that during the public hearing.
And maybe further clarification is required to include, with the exception of the C1? Have to think about this. Good point.
Well, I'm sure that you'll take that advice and relook at that. We do have the opportunity, once again, of course, at the public hearing. Counselor Harper?
I'm prepared to make -- present first reading. I move that first reading be given to Bylaw 2016-02.
Thank you. Does council have further questions? Those in favor? That's Carrie. Now, please, motion for public hearing. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that a public hearing for Bylaw 2016-02 be set for Monday, March 14th, 2016, at 1:00 PM in the council chambers.
Thank you. And I'd call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. And thank you for your time this evening. Good night. And our added item, 7B, Road Closure Bylaw 2016-01. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, your worship. This bylaw was on the last council agenda and did receive first reading, and a public hearing was set for tonight, but we did miss our advertising requirement, so we're asking for an extension so that we can do the requisite advertising and get this back on track.
So what are you asking?
We're asking that a public hearing for this bylaw be rescheduled.
For the 29th rather than the 14th? Okay. Thank you. And who would like to -- Counselor?
Bearshell.
Bearshell. Everybody's hiding over there. Thank you.
I move that a public hearing for Bylaw 2016-01 be rescheduled for Tuesday, March 29th, 2016, at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
Does council have questions? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Unfinished business? None. And our new business, page 14, please, in your agenda, and this is Public at Large Appointments for FCSS. We've had one cancellation, resignation, and now we have two members open with application. First application, Counselor Duryea.
Thank you, your worship. I would move that Owen Weimer be appointed to the Family and Community Support Services Board for a term of two years to expire October 2018.
Does council have questions? Hearing none, I'd call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. And the second FCSS appointment. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that Carolyn Tashemi be appointed to the Family and Community Support Services Board for a term of two years to expire October 2018.
And does council have questions? Seeing none, I call for the vote. Those in favor? That's Carrie. Thank you. Page 16 of your agenda, our 2016 operating budget, at which time we also discussed at our council P&amp;P, and now brought back to council. Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, your worship, and I thank Mr. Lucas for doing a good job on the background report for the budget. And the page, that starts on page 18, council asked us for the changes and the rationale for the changes from when the proposed budget was brought forward at the P&amp;P, so that is in the information package as well, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Lucas if he wants to make any further comments.
First of all, I need to apologize. I did some quick math in my head at the last council, or the P&amp;P meeting, and I was wrong. So I apologize for that. Apparently, 227 minus 150 is, 125 is not 150, which is what I thought it was, so I apologize for that. So what was presented before was, had a deficit of 227,000. Council requested to administration to find 125,000. And then, look at what the effect of a -- it was discussed about needing a 1.8 percent tax increase, and we don't need that much, because I can't subtract in my head. And so we're looking at a 1 and 1/4 percent tax increase, and so the budget presented tonight is balanced with a 1 and 1/4 percent tax increase and what administration was able to find.
Thank you, Mr. Lucas. Does council wish to go through this page by page to recognize the changes that have been made? And I believe they're marked in blue, if I'm correct? So that would start on page 26 of your agenda. We can quickly run through these so that you understand, for those of you that weren't here at our council P&amp;P, where we had the discussion of this and where administration has put closure to that in this proposal. So we'll move down from page 26 to page 27. Do you have questions? All right. We'll move to page 28. The only difference I see on there is the corrected council fees and mayor fees that have deductions. I hope we can stand by that with the more busy we are and pulling back in those areas. We're just going to have to see what we can do to work with that.
You know, what I mean by corrected is, in the original package you were given, the 10,000 was the council fees and the 47,000 was the travel and subsistence. I had the two numbers switched, and so I've corrected those numbers.
Thank you. All right. And solicitor, on the next page, I see what you're saying is you've dropped that fee? Reduced it to $6,000?
Your worship and members of council, it's reduced from 6,000 in 2014, but the --
50.
But from the budget package that was given you before, in order to, part of the 125, it was only reduced by 2,000, but from 2015, it's reduced by the 6.
Okay. Well, we're on par with that. We hope that we have a good 2016, and we won't need those. All right. Page 30. And we all know that insurance has hit everybody hard in all the businesses and community, even in our personal lives. That was an increase of 8 percent.
And your worship and council, the original estimate was 12 percent, so there's been some savings there.
Yes, thank you. And the natural gas, again, that's, we spoke about that. There's really nothing we can do in that area that you've worked on for us. Page 32. Are we good? Training for the office of the CAO and travel and subsistence. Was this a result of not going to FCM? Mr. McGinnis?
To sustainable communities, yes.
So that's the only change?
That is the only change on that page, yes.
Okay. Thank you. And page 33. Again, insurance. We're good? All right. We'll go down then to page, start with page 35. Fire protection. That's revenue. Page 36. There's no changes. Page 37. No changes. And 38, again, there was no changes. That's disaster services. Not much in that area, and we hope there isn't. And page 39, insurance, once again. Seems to hit every department. 41. Page 41, franchise. Did you want to explain that for the councillors that were away, Mr. Lucas? The franchise change? Transfers from operations, electrical franchise?
No. In going, yes. The franchise fees, the, first of all, well, first of all, how deeply do you want me to go into franchise?
Well, you don't have to. There is a note here. It says, "Money from electrical franchise fees discovers the cost of street lighting." That's pretty, that's straightforward. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. That'll be fine. How about the equipment change that we did there? I see there's a note there as well. Does council have questions with that, that were away? Increase in budget due to wear of equipment and some major repairs to dump trucks and We're good. Page 43, nothing. Now, what's all the yellow highlighting here, Mr. Lucas?
The yellow, when we brought forward the interim budget in December, we set utility rates, but we hadn't determined exactly what the 2016 budget would be, so the yellow is the changes to the utility budget from what you saw in December. But we balanced the changes so that the rates that we set in December are, will still work.
Okay.
Where we've increased, we've decreased other places, and we've made it work.
Thank you. All right. Moving to page 46. I see you've noted where the changes were. I don't see any questions. This, again, was information that we've already reviewed, so. And you've noted all the changed from council-approved, for council in yellow here, so that's good. Holy smokes. Do we really spend $10,500 on bio bags for the community? And that just discludes people that go to the dollar store? Do those bags work just as good, really?
As long as it's a cornstarch. Sorry. As long as they're a cornstarch-based bag, they're compostable bag.
Wow. That's a good business to start.
And there's a revenue side to offset that expenditure.
Yes. Very good. All right. I'm moving down to the next page. I'm down to page 53, social development revenue. Expenses, pretty straightforward. Now, on page 55, we have a cemetery open and close adjustment. And then on 57, we have some engineering. What's the difference there? You've got quite a jump there. Wow. We've dropped quite a bit there, and has that got to do with what, could you explain that? Just?
Okay. The engineering in, when we originally, when we budgeted in 2015, at that time, we did not have our own engineering technologist, and there was some projects that were covered that had been budgeted for previously. And if you remember, Counselor Bearshell had asked why the large transfer from reserves. Those were to cover the pre-existing budget-approved engineering projects, but those have been completed now. And so the change in the blue, the 15,000, is actually, it was a decrease, yeah, is a decrease of 5,000 from what was presented at P&amp;P.
Well, that's good. There's always those little things that help us look, relook at things. And then page 58, off-site levies for the bylaw. Transfer from operating reserve?
Okay. Again, that's a project that was started in 2015, and we're almost finished, to review off-site levies. And we also budgeted for doing a little bit of development bylaw review, and because we had budgeted for that previously, it shouldn't have been budgeted as a new expense, and so I put the transfer to reserve, from reserves, in as a correct revenue.
Very good. Do we have questions over there? Okay. Page 59. Fuel, is that fuel for the Sunshine Bus that I'm looking at, that blue line? No, transfer to reserves. 10,000?
And your worship, that's actually an increase. As I was going through this, I realized that I hadn't put the transfer to reserves in. And assuming we're going to replace the Sunshine Bus 10 years from now, we need to have money available to replace it, and so this is actually an increase from what you saw before.
Because you didn't have anything. Okay. Questions with that? Counselor Bearshell?
A question, I don't know who can answer this, but when the Sunshine Bus was originally set up to operate, was it set up to operate at such a loss? Was it, does anyone have any history on that? Because I'm kind of curious of that.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yeah, the longer history is, we used to get a grant from provincial government. That grant went away probably three or four years ago, and it wasn't that much. I think it was an $18,000 year grant, but that, combined with the user fees, did cover the cost of operating Sunshine Bus. Some things have changed. Not only the grant has went away, but the CPR has said that we need to pay the bus drivers as employees and not volunteers, so we have to T4 them now, and there are source deductions. So, yeah, that business model is gone, but when the grant was there, it was self-sufficient.
Yes, supplemental?
Supplemental to Counselor Bearshell's question. Has the new provincial government instituted any new grants available for senior or and/or rural transportation?
I don't mean to be flippant, but the new provincial government basically has the same response as the old provincial government, use your MSI grants. That meaning, no, there's no specific transportation grants, but, you know, they do say that, you know, you can use your MSI for various things, including the small operating piece that we have, so that's the response we've got to this point.
Thank you. I'm just looking at this gallery, and just dawned on me, are you here for a particular item, madam?
On topic.
Thank you. Thank you for attending this evening. All right. We'll move down to page 60, then. Insurance, once again, in recreation. And 61, with the rental adjustment for the Aquatic Center. We did talk about that at Policies and Procedures. And pool miscellaneous sales. We talked about that as well. So those are areas you looked at, as well as equipment for repair and maintenance. Did you have a question?
Boiler inspection.
Right. Boiler inspection. Yes, sorry. Counselor Harper?
This, once again, is in reference to a question that I posed at our last budget meeting, and that was, and I believe administration was going to get back to us, hopefully they did at the P&amp;P. And it's in reference to the contract that the Town of Olles has with the Olles College Students Association. When was the last time it was renewed? And because I know that, basically, their payment over the years has consistently been within $1,000, and yet their student population increases, but I'm just wondering if we're looking at when that contract is up for renewal? And we all recognize that the costs have gone up considerably at our pool. So do we know when that contract will be up for renewal?
Mr. McGinnis, has it come up in your term here?
No. No. And, yeah, I think it had, it was linked to the land donation from the college, and it was a 20-year agreement, but Doug's just looking right now, so give us a few minutes, and we can come back to that one.
So you seem to think that in the agreement, if it was a 20-year agreement, then we can't reopen that for 20 years?
If that's the agreement we signed, but we'll, I think Doug's looking for the agreement right now.
Okay. And I'm okay to hear that answer later on. All right. We'll just keep moving down while Mr. Wagstaff looks for that. Other changes, then? Page 63, our minor hockey ice rentals. Counselor Bearshell?
Thank you. I was talking to somebody at minor hockey, and they'd mentioned that they were, they thought that there was going to be a big increase in fees for minor hockey, well, adult hockey, minor hockey. Is that true? Were you looking at, because I hadn't heard anything, and I wasn't sure what to tell.
I would pull that up again from when we --
I would pull that up again from when we, your worship, through, through the schedule that was, the fee schedule that was approved in June. My recollection is it was $5 increase per hour this year to minor hockey, and a $5 per hour increase next year to minor hockey. But I will also look that up. It was the fee schedule that was passed in June.
Excuse me, supplemental. So, is that, that fee schedule is just for one year, or two years, or what was it? If you remember?
We approved two years. We approved the 15, 16, and 16, 17 rates.
All right. And so, we have ice rental for minor hockey and Broncos, all on this one page. And we discussed that at our PNP. Repair and maintenance to the complex building itself. Excuse me. And the reason why in the subtitle. And now, we're back down to, oh, ambush security uniforms. General supplies. Was that for the peace officer? What is that?
No, this is, is.
The security system in the facility?
The security system for, yeah, for this facility. But the uniforms is the, for the employees that work for both parks and at the sportsplex. And so, the, part of the cost of the uniforms would come into sportsplex, and part will go into parks.
Thank you. And water and sewer complex as well, and transfer to rec. Okay. Nothing new there. Parks and other gen, okay. You ready, Mr. Wegstaff?
I'm ready with one of the questions, because I knew exactly where that one was at. On, on the rates, proposed August, sorry, not proposed, approved for August 15, the rate went up to $95 an hour on prime. And as of August 1st, 2016, it is at $100 an hour during prime. The non-prime is $50 August 1st, 2015, and it goes up to 55 August 1st, 2016. So, that's the changes. There was a $9 increase over this year, and that was, it had not been raised in a number of years. I think it was.
We discussed that.
It was back in June.
Yeah, we discussed it at PNP, unfortunately, you were away, so that was a good question. Thank you. Okay. Mary Jane's taking care of him over there. All right. Now, we're back on to page 65 here for parks and other general. We had some mowing, Red Deer Regional. We have some parks and others. Post, what is this? I got my lines. Freight and postage, memberships, not big, continued tree removal. That was a question we discussed at PNP. Playground equipment, parks, building. Is that, which building is that? Is that the washrooms? That's the washrooms, do we discuss that at PNP? Yep, okay. And then the fiber network. That's good for that page. Nothing on special events. And nothing at Splash Park. Sports fields, we have ball diamond fees, adjustments, and just a transfer. Not much of a change from the Lions there. And last, but not least, museum insurance. All the insurance rates went up everywhere, as well as the Evergreen Center. And that's it? Unless you have further questions you want to add to that? Mr. Wegstaff still frantically looking for that. I would say that that was a question that Mr. Wegstaff is actually going to have to pull the agreement up and, and review for us. Councilor Harper?
I do have the agreement in front of me now. I'm just looking for the dates to answer that question.
Okay.
Another couple moments, your worship, and I will have the answer.
That's just fine. Thank you. Is there anything else you would like to add to, Mr. Lucas, to the operating budget on the main page, where you've provided us all this wonderful information?
Only if there's questions.
Okay. We got all the right figures there now. Councilor Bearshell?
I'd ask the question, and excuse, maybe I'm losing my memory, but the ball diamond fees seem, the ball diamond revenue seems quite low. And I think I asked, if I remember, that, you know, what other municipalities charge? Was there any? Are we on, are we in the ballpark, so to speak?
That's interesting. You're very punny. That's interesting. I had a counselor speak to me with regards to ball diamonds and sundry this weekend, and note that they don't get used at all. And they wanted to find out what they were going to do with them. There's a couple of municipalities that aren't using their ball diamonds at all, so that's an interesting, it would be a good question to check out. Counselor, or Mr. Wegstaff?
So, last year, we reviewed the Aquatic Center and Arena, and the sportsplex fees. This year, we are going through a review on the ball diamond. So, that will be coming to council in the May-June period of time.
I think maybe that was Didsbury I was speaking about, not sundry. Go ahead, Councilor Bearshell.
So, when you do a review, do you take into account the inputs? For example, the grass cutting and the ma, and the manpower and the maintenance, based on when you look and see what the, what the case is around it? Do you do that when you, when you do that review?
Yes. We also provide council a cost of operation, so that you have an idea of what, what the rates are bringing in as compared to the costs.
Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I just wanted to ask, Mr. Lucas, if, if there was any further, for getting codes for the photocopy machine? That's per employee.
We do have the capability of, of doing that. We haven't, now, okay, now, maybe I misunderstood you, but I'm, you're talking about.
Well, just because some of the departments had huge photocopy costs.
And we do not 100% attribute the photocopy costs to the correct department. Some of the, some of the departments bear more of the cost than, than others. We do some distribution, but not 100% accurately.
There must be 100 pages in that agreement. Must be time to review it.
It's a small screen. It is a 20-year agreement, your worship. I was just also looking for what the fee terms were. But the agreement is a 20-year agreement, starting in 2001.
Okay, well, we're pretty, we're going to have to take some time to review that agreement, then. I think what we'll have to do is take that back, Mr. Wegstaff, and try and pinpoint what those questions are, and bring it back to us. It's nothing we're going to resolve today anyways. So, thanks. Are you okay with that, Councilor Harper? Good? All right. Then we have our operating budget, the amount of $26,568,550, asking for approval. Councilor Durie?
Thank you, your worship. I would move that the 2016 operating budget in the amount of $26,568,550 be approved as presented.
I'd ask any final questions at this time from council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you, Mr. McGinnis, and your staff for going back and reducing $125,000 out of our final operating budget. Well done. We hope that everything works well for 2016.
Yes, and thanks, thanks to council as well. I'm looking forward to perfecting our new budget planning process, starting again in the second quarter of this year, and fully implementing it. So, I think it's a great process. I think we've done good work to, to ensure that council has, you know, a better input on the budget and the budget process. So, thank you for your patience.
I'd also like to thank my fellow colleague council members for their input and patience. I know it's been a little confusing for us to use this proposed budget that we chose from our retreat, and it's been a little bit difficult, to say the least, but we made it through it, and next, this year will be a much better process for us. Councilor Durie?
Through the chair to Administration, I'd like to thank Administration for the color blue.
Code blue, code blue. All right, page 77, please. These council policies were reviewed, also at our council policies and priorities. For the sake of the councils that were away, if you didn't have the opportunity to look at your agenda, we did pull one policy out, and we will be bringing that back to the next regular council meeting. So, what you have in front of you today are four policies. And I'd start with the first one, start the first one. Go ahead, Councilor Bennett?
Thank you, your worship. I move that the council policy 102C, brand standard policy, be approved as presented.
I'd like to open this up to questions, once again, from council? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And we will move down to the 103C. Would like to take that. Councilor Bearshell?
Thank you, worship. I move that council policy 103C, terms of reference policy be approved as presented.
Does council have questions? I think Administration did very good, from what I read of this, of capturing our comments. Thank you very much, Marcy. No questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. And Counselor Walsh, would you like to do 104?
Yeah, I'd like to move that council policy 104C, letters of support policy be approved as presented.
Does council have questions? Seeing none, call for the vote. Those in favor? That's carried. And Councilor Overwater, 105C?
Thank you, your worship. I move that council policy 105C, communication response policy, be approved as presented.
Questions? That's why it's good to have a PNP meeting, because we get to talk all about that in an open meeting and get some work done here. Good. I'll call for the vote, then those in favor? That's carried. We'll see the next, is it 109 that's coming back? 102, okay. Thank you. All right, that'll come back at a next meet. Thank you. Yes, there was. Very good. Let's move to page 86. Up your agenda, please. I'd like to remind council, I only see one set of minutes in here, so please, to remind you, to make sure you get Marcy your minutes from all your board committee or commission meetings. And I would, a motion on the floor, please. Councilor Harper?
So, move that reports from council, authorities, boards, commissions, committees, and task forces end in February 22, 2016, be received for information.
Very good. We do have an open floor this evening, and I would ask council if you wish to report anything, to please move forward. Councilor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. I'd just like to state also that the Mountain View Regional Waste Management Commission, their minutes, I don't sign them until our next board meeting, so then we don't send the approved ones in. So, they're usually running about a month or two late.
You know.
Just so you know that.
Okay.
Also, we had our meeting today, and we're abiding by our business plan. We're reviewing our policies. We have 29 policies. We've reviewed 25 already. Just let me look at this here. We're in the process of working with the auditor. We have, in our post-closure reserve, we have 865,226. According to our financial audited statement from 2014, we were to have around 1.01 million in there, so we're close to that. Recycling reserve is 104,076. Capital reserve is 151,710. We are borrowing $709,713.20 from ACFA for a new compactor, which will be over 10-year period. We took quite a few of our, quite a bit of our equipment into Mitchener Allen Auction, and as all we, we all know, that when you take something into an auction, some of the things that you think should go really good, they don't, and vice versa. So, we did sell for about $420,000. However, we will be taking a substantial loss, and that will be reflected. Hopefully, we're going to try and have that reflected on our 2015 audited statement. Went to the SEWA meeting on Friday, and they will be doing another dumpster dive of four different communities, which will have a detailed analysis of what actually is in the waste. We already did three other communities, so we'll be doing three or four other communities going forward. We need to determine exactly what is in the waste in order to figure out what kind of facility to build. And we will also be looking at picking sites for where this facility will be built. Membership agreement was presented at our meeting today. All municipalities signed it. And we moved to have DevCon incorporated for our cell construction for a cost of $1,038,805. And that is carried over a 10-year period. So, okay, they will start that April 1st, and hopefully finish at June 30th, depending on how rainy our season will be. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Do you have a question, Councilor Bearshell? Okay. Okay, we'll go around the table. Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, just one meeting this month, that was Friday, South Radio Regional Waste Water Commission. Breaking in a new CEO. He's administering, he's putting in a lot of new processes, so we give him a break, and give him a bit more, more time to get up to speed on that. But our only capital project this year is 1.4 million, which is quite small compared to the past eight years. But it's a Waske'su, number one. They're upgrading that system, and lift station starts March 7th, should finish May, May 15th. That's on the go. I guess the one issue on the line is the odor management facility, before we hand it off to Red Deer. It's basically a facility that filters out the odors. It's organic mulch that they put in, it's about a meter deep. And the supplier of that mulch got it wrong, and it froze, so no airflow through it. So, they're, they're having some issues they're dealing with there. Also, they were, had metering issues between a SCADA system, which is the software, and the actual meters that are in the lift stations. They were using the SCADA ones to bill us, and it was overbilling us. So, from November, they've been using the meters out of the lift stations, and they're going back from November, from when we started, to reconcile the differences in there. So, we should be getting some credits for what we've been paying for wastewater. They didn't have it ready, so looking forward to see what they come up with. That's it.
Thank you. Counselor Harper?
Actually, your worship, you attended, I believe, my one and only meeting last week in my absence, so I'm looking forward to the report.
Thank you. Counselor Bearshell?
Thank you, your worship. So, Mountain View Regional Water Services Commission, quick look at the 2015, that audited financial showed budgeted expenses for chemicals at $200,000, and an actual expense of 70. I just kind of looked for an explanation of that. Was told it fluctuates, that number fluctuates. They said that a lack of spring runoff was the biggest reason for, for the fact that their chemical bill was quite low. If anyone wants to dispute that, but that's one thing I noticed. Alberta Environment is potentially lucky. Alberta Environment is potentially looking at updating a change to a different system of water treatment. Our plant was at one time state-of-the-art and continues to be up to a high standard in relation to plants across the province, as I'm told. We're a membrane system, and the next step is, the next step up would be to a cartridge system. We are approved for a grant to do a UV upgrade. However, the province has no money to give us to do this upgrade, so that is not gonna happen in the immediate future, I don't think. We've contracted, excuse me, I'm trying to work my phone here, and it's in my word from The commission has contracted Associated Engineering to do a study for us, so that they can be prepared for these changes if and when they come. Management feels these changes are not necessary, however, the potential, the potential is there for them to be a requirement, which we've seen in the past. The cost for this change would be over, you know, in today's dollars, over $5 million. This burden could be compared to somewhat to the province maintaining a regional wastewater strategy. Extremely costly and arguably not the best solution. So, that's just kind of a heads up, I guess, as to, as to the future. You know, I'm very confident in what we're doing in my two years on the commission. You know, that we do a fantastic job, but as always, there's, there's always changes down the pipe, and, but those changes are gonna cost money, and we'll see how that goes. Anyways, that's all I had. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much. Anything in police advisory?
I believe I reported on that last time, yeah.
Nothing new. All right, thank you. Counselor Duryea?
Thank you, your worship. Most of my meetings will take place actually in the next couple of days. The only meeting I really had was a committee meeting for Pillars of the Village. Tickets are available, so make sure you go online for your tickets. There's the nobility, there's the merchants, and then there's the peasants, in whichever level you prefer to eat, either with your hands, or more food with your hands, or more food with your hands. It all works out. No, no, there's, there's food for everybody. I'm responsible for the vendors, so I'm, I've contacted all of the people who were there last year, selling night stuff, peasant stuff, whatever, whatever.
Swords.
Swords, yes, swords. And so, that's what I'm, I'm doing with regards to the library in Pillars of the Village. But we do have a few more meetings coming up tomorrow and then the following day, so kind of a bit of a short one tonight. Thank you, your worship.
You're welcome. Counselor Bennett?
I didn't have any meetings this past month. Mine will begin March 1.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did attend the chamber meeting. I left my council binder in my office, and it's got a couple of the sheets in there. I'll have to report them next meeting. The district, the Chamber of Commerce, we did have a great presentation from Dean Owen on the Olds Institute marketing plan. I have asked Mr. Owen if he would please bring that forward and bring that to counsel. It was a very interesting and informative presentation, so if you could find some time to arrange that with our, with Marcy, that would be fabulous. I really enjoyed that, and I know our counsel will as well. There was talk about the, there'll be no Olds Toberfest, apparently, in Olds for 2016. The feeling was that it was going to return in 2017. There was a brief conversation on that, and they were going to also check with the Communities in Bloom involvement with the Harvest Festival for this year, because there was some talk that they were going to look on some movement in that, and I had noted that in our Communities in Bloom presentation, that I do not recall them speaking about the Harvest Festival at all. So, I asked them to contact, I asked the chamber to contact before they further got involved in making arrangements to do the Harvest Festival, whether there was going to be involvement in that. Also, the annual employee appreciation luncheon date was set for April 9. For those that are interested, and they had the luncheon meeting invite for Wednesday, February 10, that's coming up, and that would be for yourself, Counselor, Counselor Harper? February 10? Or, no, we passed that already. You were already gone on holidays since then. Holy spokes. Anyways, what else do I have here? The marketing plan, they're being very ambitious. They had quite a few great reports and things that they wanted to share. They did quite an extensive Olds Institute report back to the chamber board with regards to the Mountain View Power Business Plan, Olds Fiber, community Wi-Fi, the hospital with the 26 units that they're supplying for Wi-Fi. They did the technology terms of reference review, and they had an Olds Connected Community update. So, they were being well-informed. Also, I attended the SAWA meeting with, that was held, and just a note, I know some, some of you said that you were trying to get on their website, and you can get on it now. It's live and up and running, and it's very informative. So, it's just S-A-E-W-A, sawa.ca, and they have had great contact through, what, what position does Paul have? Is he a director?
He's a counselor for MD of Big Horn.
Right.
And he's the vice chair for SEWA.
Okay, and he's extremely active. He's, he's met with the Minister MLA, or MLM Minister, they're not quite sure what to call her. But anyway, Shannon Phillips, and there's been some great feedback that he's gotten in regards to the proposed project, and she seems extremely interested because of the mandate that they have, their, their mandate for sustainability. I think I could just, I'm gonna leave the rest until the minutes come in for that particular meeting. March 1, there's par breakfast Tuesday. Final call for anybody that needs tickets will be probably Thursday at the latest. And I'm going to ask counsel if they have any questions and anything. Yes, Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, your worship. I have a couple. Have we started writing letters to the NDP on the Highway 27 and 57 intersection? And also, did we ever get a budget back on the Olds Toberfest? I don't recall that, do we?
I'll start with the first question. The first question is that it's in draft format with Marcy and my CO, or our CAO, so we'll be working to complete that this week. Mr. Wagstaff?
The law, the short answer is no. We've only had verbal updates. We've not received yet their, anything in writing.
Go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I sort of find that a bit unacceptable. I would think by now, they should have some figures for us.
I concur. So, that's one that we're still working on to get from them, so it's my understanding that they're, the employee that was doing that is in Texas currently.
There's a huge rodeo in Texas right now. I know my, my, yes, there is. I had family down there. That was also discussed at the chamber meeting. Go ahead, Counselor Harper.
Well, I do have the one question that comes from your report. I did not realize that they, they don't intend going ahead with an Toberfest until just now.
Okay, and, and when, it was on the agenda here as a discussion for correspondence on Olds Toberfest to return to Olds, and the, the report back at the chamber meeting was that it will not be held in November 2016. The chamber did have a brief discussion on that in regards to whether they thought that that was gonna be good for them or bad for them because of the perception of how it's gonna be so much more difficult to bring forward. And I think there's many reasons. I'm not going to assume anything. I'm not part of that, part of that group, but it could very well be that it didn't work out as well as they thought it was going to work, and I'd be surprised then if it would become an annual. But we don't have any say in that, so Mr. Wagstaff will get some more update for us on that. I know they haven't come to us for any funds, and that could be one of the reasons they pulled back too, is because they're finding that in these times, it's very difficult to raise funds and money. So, I'm sure that, that'll come forward to us in the future. Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor from Counselor Harper to accept reports. Any further questions? Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much. And we'll go down to page 98, please. Counsel payable, and we'll get a motion on the floor, please. Counselor Bearishel?
I'll make the motion if somebody can put it up on the floor.
Page 98.
It's okay.
There it is.
I move that January 1, 2016, January 30 to January 31, 2016, counsel's payable report be received for information.
Does counsel have questions? I had people on holidays, and they didn't have a time to really ask any questions. This new syst, I like the new system, I'll tell you that much. It's a lot easier to, well, I'm sorry, Mr. Lucas, I know it probably took a lot of patience, but it is a lot easier to work with when you get, get going with it, isn't it? All right. Counselor Overwater?
Thank you, worship. I'm not sure, this, this probably isn't a question to be out in public, so I did send an email to Mr. McGinnis and Mr. Chant. Is that something that would be in camera? No?
No, go ahead and ask a question.
Okay, I see we're paying Can Pack their monthly payment, and I'm just wondering, where are we with the grass bins? Like, are the grass bins?
I did, I did understand, I saw your email at the last minute here, and it was a discussion. I apologize, I didn't get back to you today, but it was a discussion we had at our council policies and priorities meeting, which you were away, which you were away, you weren't here.
I was just here.
No, the, were you not, you were away at the one previous to that where we had the discussion, but anyways, we have an answer.
So, I called Can Pack this morning to see where they're at. The answer I got, sorry, the pacemaker going off.
It's your heart?
Yeah, it's my heart, just stopped. So, talking with Mark with Can Pack today, he was actually led to believe from his employees that all the grass bins had been collected. So, so I told him those two areas that hadn't had collected, and he was, said he'd get on it right away, and I said, and make sure he drives the rest of the town to make sure there is no other bins left over there. So, he was under the impression that his staff had, had collected them all, much to his surprise, they hadn't, and he's telling me that they're working on the lids as we speak. He did have another, he wanted to talk about some other stuff with me, but that's the answer to the email from yesterday, is I know he'd come to P&amp;P a couple of months.
Were you there when he was here? No, you weren't here for that presentation, and we did have that discussion there in great, great detail. Thank you. Very good. Any further questions? We have a motion from Counselor Bearishel on the floor. Those in favor? That's carried. Thank you. No accounts payable, no monthly cash, no accounts, aren't these backwards?
No.
Okay, so the monthly cash statement should have been accounts payable. Okay, that's all right. We'll just skip that one. And so, when you, when, you might want to redo that. The monthly cash statement for page 98 is actually the accounts payable.
As per the procedural bylaws, those are all the titles that are on that. The accounts payable comes quarterly, correct, Mr. Lucas?
Well, it's the other way around. It's the other way around. Yeah.
Accounts payable comes monthly.
Yes, and it says accounts payable, check register on there, so it should go under accounts payable. So, just flip that down, that one page, and that'll be fine. Okay, we'll move down to correspondence and information, page 105. Motion then, Counsel Duryea?
Thank you, worship. I would move that the correspondence and information report ending February 22, 2016, be received for information.
Thank you. Question, what is Central Mountain View Advisory Group, and why is it in here? I don't, and who goes to that? Like, why is it in here? Where'd that come from? Central Mountain View Advisory Group?
Came in through the administration email, and it's in correspondence versus the council boards and committees, because it's general correspondence.
Mr. McGinnis, can you give me some light on this? I don't know why.
Been addressed to the town of Olds. We don't have a representative that sits on this. Mountain View County is, is represented. I'm not sure why it, it is addressed to the town, but it must've came through, addressed to the town of Olds.
So, somebody sent them then to us then? Okay. I, huh?
I don't think it's a bad thing. I think it's kinda good to know what the county's doing out there.
It is, but I'd like some background.
Yeah.
I mean, if I would've caught this, I would've probably liked to have had more background for counsel, so we know why we're getting this. I don't have a clue who these people are or why they do what they do, but we'll look into that. Any questions with regards, the Rope Skipping Canada came out of the Chamber of Commerce meeting, where it was sent to the chamber members, and I asked to put it on our council agenda for awareness for council, so you know that it was said that there'll be approximately 1,000 people in the community that weekend, and it's an awareness to make sure the businesses know that there's gonna be a flood of people from May 20 to 23 in town. Any further questions? All right, we have a motion on the floor from Counsel Duryea. Those in favor? That's carried. Now, question period. I see we have a delegation in the crowd. Would you, do you have any questions at all for counsel this evening, ma'am?
No, I don't. I just, so I was interested in.
We certainly do respect the time you've spent with us this evening. Thank you. All right, then, we'll call for German, and the media can have a chat with us if they so wish.
Just one point of clarification. I think to Marcy's point about items 11 and 12 on the agenda, I think what has happened, Marcy, is we've changed the monthly cash statement to a quarterly cash statement, but the procedural bylaw has not been amended, so we should probably bring that forward so those two things align.
It's like the stars move after light.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. All right, Counselor Harper, Jordan? Okay, all in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Old Community TV, your go-to channel for news and information in Olds, Alberta.